6:07, we're going to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum, we have Richard, Kurt, myself. Looking for any adjustments to the agenda.
Savannah?
So we have the addition of one more canvas control board application. I guess it's just a question about the Marvin parcel as it relates to. Official land, some town land.
It's with the town being donated the town of land to the department official.
That was under your section somewhere?
I think it's the bottom.
Alright, brings us to approving limits from May 21st.
You don't have a quorum. You weren't here.
But I wasn't here, so I can't vote on those.
He can't vote on it, so there's no quorum.
Just table that. Well, look at us, right back on schedule. Which brings us to our 6:10 meeting, a minute early. Westover property planning according to FEMA guidelines. So everybody knows that we acquired the Westover property. Over here on School Street, I think they address 64 School Street. And there's been a lot of talk about trying to turn that into a public park. Myself, Tori, and Gordon. Forest Committee was last name of state, right? Gordon, I've been doing some very early planning things about that and getting some ideas. Right now, the only permanent, or semi-permanent. Thing that has come from those meetings is that on June 12th at 6:00. There's going to be some information at the forest committee meetings. And we're looking for some input on what the community might want. Or what we might be looking for, for that parcel and for that property. We do have some guidelines that you need to play by. Any structure would need to be all bit cited, any parking would need to be, you know, unimproved. So we can't have asphalt and things like that. We could do rec fields, we could do, I think Kurt, the last time we spoke about it. You had mentioned the community garden and how that might tie in with what the larger overall plan is here. So there's, there's a bunch, I mean, the world is our oyster. So please join us at that meeting and we are planning a second round of meetings. For community outreach with the Long Island Planning Commission to try and figure out what we can do with that. So that it doesn't just grow up and turn into. All the other flood buyout properties that we have with the exception of the one that you've got marked on down here.
Yeah, that's the Marvin parcel.
Okay.
That's the.
That's later.
That's going to be later.
Mike, you, you, you didn't do correspondence.
Oh, look at that, thanks for the help. We do have some correspondence. The Long Island Planning Commission is doing their annual meeting June 10th at 5:30. Board of Directors Annual Meeting, 6:00 PM, they have a reception in 6:30, they have the Marvin Award Ceremony. Where. Our select board chairman, but she has received the community service award. And we're looking to get RSVPs from the board to see how many of us are going to attend that. No, I'm not able to.
Richard, do you think you would be interested in attending?
Let's see.
Richard?
He might be working on muting.
Yes, Mark, what was the question?
Would you be interested in attending the meeting next Tuesday night? It's an event. Held by the Louisville County Planning Commission, it's their annual meeting and also the Marvin Awards. And Linda Martin is receiving the community service award.
Oh, yes.
June 10th, Tuesday at 6:00 PM and there's, I think serving will be like a light meal.
Okay, fine, now where is it going to be?
At River Arts in Morrisville.
At what?
River Arts in Morrisville. It's at the old Grange.
Alright, I'll figure that out. I don't get the town.
Pardon?
Okay, thank you.
I'll send you the info, Richard.
Alright, thank you.
Sure.
Is that it for?
I don't know if that's it for course line, but I'm sure if there's any comments from the community.
I don't see anyone online.
Anything like that? Number six, number six, we are 10 minutes ahead of schedule, I have to be 10 minutes late. But I feel like everybody here that wants to talk about the athletic storage container is here, so. Over yours.
So, Prime European, I live over on Flatiron Road. And I just want to start with, I'm really impressed with how that ball field came out, like it's a hundred times better than it was before the flooding occurred. And so it's really nice to see that, the fact that you guys expanded like top of the soccer area is, get that field all back to where it should be is just awesome. And to see people on it is really exciting. And you know, it's just. Kind of dealt out of a rough hand by having those couple houses flooded out and losing that section of the, the community. But there's also that opportunity for that overall improvement of that area and green space potentially. On the other side, repairing these houses and where the, the Gibbs was living there. You know, to see those places kind of coming into, you know, a workable area is, is really exciting as well. It's just a nice spot, it's beautiful and it's nice to see the town being able to have those kind of opportunities. Our, our struggle was just around that storage container that's on the, on Bailey, you're describing, property. You know, couple of concerns on it, one, you know, flood related wise, just worried about if we flood again, I mean that. Her house had three feet of water on first floor, so that's certainly where that, that container is. And we just hate to see the container become a damage or become something that floats downstream. We saw what happened to debris damage bridge and push water over onto, to School Street. And I think something similar would happen if we ever had to float again to that extent. The other piece is just aesthetically, we, all of our windows that face out the front of the house, that's exactly what we could see and it's just. If it were a shed or something that, you know, looked a little more appropriate than a, than a container, like I think that's easier built as well than. Storage container, just, you know, aesthetically isn't really leading to the eye that we have the green space and. You know, the potential there to have. House or CD or whatever that's, you know, kind of decides to go with, I think it just doesn't quite fit in with that, that piece of. I know that it's got stuff I can put on it or. Yeah, so I understand there's a level of a need, but. Just trying to figure out as far as location of that container.
And that was discussed. In other slight order meeting last fall when it first came up. The sheds were looked at, they were viewed as a worse floating threat because of their lack of weight. And their structural integrity as compared to shipping container. They're also apparently vulnerable to rodents and since we have everything for generations from. You know, you like you build up a program, I mean all that. Now we've rebuilt it and protecting that, the one, the storage unit is watertight. So the weight ratio to the water of the same flood to what's in it. Will not float it down the river. It, it stays seated, second, that level was the 500 year flood, it's not technically in the flood plain. And, you know, the, like the aesthetic part of it, like I get it, the intent originally was to try to have a shed that would. Would look nicer. It wasn't actually doable, especially because of the flood plain, we couldn't put it on that property. We couldn't confirm where it did go for sure, we had to have something that was movable. And ultimately trying to protect all this stuff for youth sports so that Wolkett even has a chance of continuing a baseball program. And my mind just, you know, flat out, you know. Trunks everything else, you know, we've, we have been through absolutely hell, we have to keep this program going and. The, you know. You know, if we have to put that thing somewhere else, then you're asking every kid that goes there, goes to that field and every coach that goes there. To not actually be able to use anything unless they will be able to dive back forth and transport it. You know, the, I thought across the road in place of the house that was there, it's probably an improvement and. You know, at least it is slightly moved from. The field and the athletic area. Are there any specific count ordinances that restrict storage units?
To my knowledge, no, I know that personally it was the, they get assessed about a tax on them, obviously that doesn't apply here, but I don't believe there's an ordinance on it, so.
I guess what I would, what I would propose is, I, I don't want to see the storage in alternative, I mean, we already made a decision to be bought it. It is the best solution for the athletic association makes the kids. The, you know, as, as far as. You know, one, if it can be finalized and the town approves, that it can stay there. Then, you know, I, I would, you know, I would propose that, you know. The, we plan a, plan a row of, you know, five seater trees in front of it on that side, you know, and. You know, kind of leave the, the end door open, block as much of it as possible.
Like, so you know.
Yeah, I think.
Pulling the, the purple cone from that purple line you guys created and like straight out the end of that.
It's actually, if it stayed there. Linda requested that it get put up on a public concrete blocks because that will raise it completely, that would raise her by above the actual flood plain this time around. To actually do that, it's. Not like super easy, it's, you know, about $500 worth of concrete box and. When we slide it back, if it has to go on concrete blocks, I mean, we're going to slide it back onto those concrete blocks, so. You know, absolutely it could go.
Because if it was, if it was slid back, then that screening you're talking about kind of starts to happen because there's a couple of fir trees that are right in that area. And I think it would, it just, it would tuck, tuck it out of the way a little bit, so just not quite as open this way.
The, the elevation conversation is doing well, when I, I thought that it was in the flood plain, I thought that we had to have structure and it's so. Property. Because of flood damages bought out and you can't use it for, like you can't build on it anymore, you can't make improvements.
Get out the shed on it.
Right, but here, here's the thing, can you or can't you, it's been bought out, so by that ordinance, that's for properties in flood plains. It was, it's not in a flood plain, it's above the flood plain. And so like where that wishy-washy area gets in. I don't actually know the answer, I don't know if anybody knows the answer to that because. We're talking about a 500 year, you know, flood to even reach that area.
I mean, I will tell you just from, from. Being there and that, and that was like, oh, my private response to Betty Booth's house, like the water level was up into the tree line. So I, and I guess like.
Yeah, it was halfway up the cabinets. And.
It was up there.
You know, so like, you know. Technically, I don't think it has to be set on anything if keeping it low or actually relieve the problem. You know, if they wanted it raised up so that the water could flow underneath it, then the blocks would be the solution. If, you know, if that wasn't required, then I'd say keep it low and, you know, it's, you know, easier to hide that way, you know, if that's center.
Are you talking cinder blocks or?
Concrete waste blocks, you know, so it'd be, be like a two foot block, you know. 250, 300 pound. 30, 600 pound, so I have to have a serious piece of equipment bring them over and. Is, at, at this point, we're, we're through FEMA, we're done. You know. I have, I have a lot of my, my hair done in that thing and, you know, maybe just send a crew and a four. You're on a row, so I have blocks over, they don't have to. But sliding it back wouldn't be a big deal.
I mean, if the town's going to decide to keep it there, and I, and I totally appreciate everybody coming from with it and like trying to grow the program and keeping everything safe, like I totally am on your side around that. It's just from our standpoint, like when we look out the window, that's exactly what we see. And it wasn't, I mean, it just, you know, having a house there, okay, you know, it's a house, you accept that. Like, we saw the improvements getting made, like, oh, this is kind of cool, like it's gonna, you know, there's potential for some other stuff here. And then to see a container get plucked down on it, like, that's what we look at. So if it's something we don't see, then I'm not really going to care that much about it. But it's just from that aesthetic aspect of it and. It just, it jumped out.
And in my mind, it would kind of be, if there's no ordinance against it. And it can be there, you know, then it's just kind of a good, well, let's all get along and see what we can do to, you know, just all live happily together.
Yeah. As I said, like if it can get slid back, so it's kind of out of the view and it's like, we're not.
We all have airway to move it and push it sideways and put it all the way to the. I really don't, I really don't care, right now it's in a position where we can get a, a, you know, if. When we put it there because of the flood plain. The, from everything I could see. There wasn't any way anybody could have an issue with it being there. But I, I had to move it out of where it was because there. And if we actually did get a flood, I did not want that thing going down the river. You know, but for where it's sitting right now, I'd be kind of just set it where I could get a truck to it easily if we absolutely were forced to move it. So I don't know, of course Linda is the woman with all the answers, I don't know who to ask or where it's by that it does.
It is something she was working on.
She said that, told me that she would reach out to the state once we had decided a bit of this issue and that. Yeah, because that doesn't address if it's not in the flood plain.
Now then, that's, that's the issue, is it's a flooded property that was bought on FEMA money, right? Correct, things are being built and it happened again, but it's not in the flood plain, so it's kind of like this gray area, there's nothing directly.
I know when you, when you do flood buyouts, they place restrictions on the deeds, but I don't remember, I haven't seen it from that property and I don't recall seeing them, anything that outline. Let's face it, temporary storage containers. I don't really see that.
It's almost supposed to be similar what you read off from the, yeah, street.
I would assume that it would be similar, yes, and I just didn't, I don't see anything, but a new structure.
Right.
And. So I don't know if they're going to consider that storage container a structure.
And, and I think when it was originally, when we were going through it in the ball field and we're actually trying to figure out what we could do on the ball field, the questions were being asked. It had come back that if it was put on stilts or something that water could pass underneath, where it was above the flood plain, water could pass under, then. It could be acceptable. But if it was then in the flood plain, then it wasn't acceptable. And here, because we're not on the flood plain, doesn't require the blocks for water.
When they're defining flood plain, what are they using? Because those FEMA maps.
FEMA map, if people are online, you can find it.
Yeah, I'll take that. So you guys are going to do some more research on it just to see, I mean, if it turns out that, yeah, it's accepted, it's legal to be there, you know, to use that term, but just.
Yeah, we'll, we'll meet up and talk with you and look at it from your house and see like what's the best thing we can do.
Make sure, or what's that kind of, so. Talking about that space though, as far as just that recreation area now. Last year, I come in and asked you guys to think about trying to reduce speed through there, starting at Flatiron Road down through to 25. Knowing now that it's back to a recreational field and people are going to be using it, I would strongly encourage the town thinking about that. Just so we can get some signage up and then have enforceable ordinance. Just because people fly down that road and just really worried about blocking the traffic now and then people.
Run somewhere road to get to the shed if there's.
Oh yeah, I actually do have tips over that, so I'm really super worried about it.
That's why we went with the big back. Fixing the bottles across the street.
So yeah, I just, I hope the town really kind of pursues that, that piece of it at this point.
Right, I think we, Michelle, didn't we just have some conversations about?
They just have done a speed study, they just have done one on School Street. A traffic flow and a speed study, so we might be able to get the results of that, we would need to get the results of the speed study first. And then, and we're talking not Flatiron, but School Street, right?
School Street, like starting at where the Flatiron intersection is and coming this way, this way.
This way?
I'd almost like to have it up by Douglas. Because once you get to Douglas's, if you're not slowed down, someone pulls off from Flatton Iron.
Yeah, I mean, just like, that's an easy, like geographical marker, it's the intersection, but like, I agree, you know, coming down off of that hill. And starting like, you know, with town forest entry is, you know, that would be nice.
You know, Elizabeth Douglas, if you could slow it down there, because we're putting a parking lot area across from her home. It shouldn't be slowed down there before you get to that intersection.
Well, and because we have the speed study that is being completed, we have the first step of that done, so.
Did this happen, were you guys pursuing like the, like the solar powered speed signs at all?
We had talked about it once, I haven't heard back from Burr, Burr, Tenny, at V-Trans, he was supposed to give me a packet of information and hasn't yet.
That might be a, a good spot for it, if you, if you guys do wire one, come and especially come down through the. No, I mean, we're excited to see they kind of come out of life over there again in that area, so.
Yeah, I could see if you moved that storage container to the. Back further corner, yeah.
And we might even go and take it, flip it sideways and put it all the way to the back.
That would give it more resistance, it'd give it more resistance to the floodwater if it ever got there.
Yeah, I mean.
If you kept it parallel to the road. The water would flow past it.
Yeah.
It'd be a less, other area that it could hit.
Wonder if.
You guys talk back to this, we just.
Yeah, that's true.
But I think you would still have to anchor, whether you put it on blocks or you leave it on the ground.
Yeah, and which, it's, it's kind of what we figured was going to happen, the. Where exactly it was going to end up, we don't know.
For, for sure. But yeah, I think the, the back corner towards this. Area would be.
Yeah, if you anchor that box down to. 14,400 pounds of concrete. It's not going to go anywhere.
That affects the whites, it got to give issues.
So it sounds like on that, we're, we're just going to wait to hear from powers that be to make sure that it is allowed to be there and if it is allowed to be there, we'll come up with something that works for everybody. Sounds good.
Do you guys have further plans for like that side of the road at this point or?
At my knowledge. That would keep them off from the road, go in there and park. The, the redone parking areas come from like. 25 cars to eight cars, you know.
No, I mean, parking is a necessity because people are going to be on the road, airing the roadway and that's just.
Be mad to the problem.
A little, a little league game, it's from the town garage all the way to the corner of Flatiron. You single lane for park cars and that is a game max.
Biggest thinking of expanding that parking area on, on the stretch side of the road?
You could also use what used to be Gibbs. We can, we can, we can, from, from what I understand. We can park on it, what is allowed for improvements to that parking law or parking area, improvement to that area. Beyond what was stabilization of the existing foundation of the house is. Unfortunately, otherwise, we would have worked harder to try to get some more on there.
But you could also use Gibbs.
I'm thinking if you just have parking there and then Gibbs becomes an open green space and you can go past it or something.
The hope is that once that grass grows back in, that people will just pull in and park on the grass and then it will be an expanded parking area that supports vehicles. Yeah, it's a limited amount of usage and between eight cars there and a few cars that can fit up on good solid parking right now on the other side. It takes care of pretty much everything except a little big game. And then if they just fan out and park in that yard, you know, hopefully that'll start to keep it down to a minimum. Once all the riprap settles in and fills in dirt from the, the parking lot on the other side, then we'll be able to drive out the field in a second.
Oh, is that the thought to be able to get over there?
Well, it's, was where we always parked before, it's just blocked up by riprap right now.
What does that do?
Strainage, that's the state requirements for drainage from runoff.
Seems very random.
Now we're in the block, so you need water to do scouring. Right now, I think everything from that whole area funnels water into the ditch that runs along the road and then all the way down into the river.
Can I ask Brian or like what, what you would like it lower to 25 or 25?
No, you can't go below 25.
Okay.
It's 25, but you need to have an ordinance in place otherwise you can't port it, it's just. Are you guys in conversation with anyone for rail trail?
Uh huh.
Yes? Okay. So I'm going to communicate with them as well, but if the town could communicate with them to stress in some fashion to add anything. To prevent motorized vehicles going on a rail trail, that would be awesome.
How, I mean, maybe you're not supposed to.
It's happening that often, I mean, you, you would have.
It opens the doors that stands out.
Oh, yes, there's, there's trucks.
Trucks, cars, four wheelers, it's just.
It's almost like you need a little counter, you slide and pull at the beginning of it, that stops while vehicles.
Even at Fisher Bridge, they just want to plunk down a couple of traffic calls, like, doesn't have to be anything crazy, it just needs to be movable, so if you get, need to get emergency vehicles out there, you can do that, but. Any kind of visual barrier that's movable would be appreciated. And I know it's not within town jurisdictions to do it because it's on the rail trail, but I'm just. And when they hear about it, maybe they'll actually do something, because I complained last year as well, I didn't.
I've seen truck and tractor this week.
Well, a tractor, there have been a tractor at Mollank, they do, they were doing the shoulders of it, but. The four wheelers and the mopeds and cars are kind of a problem.
So you have the electric bikes and mopeds?
I don't care about the electric bikes, those are meant to be on there, but we have like gas powered four wheelers, cars and gas powered mopeds, so we. This is dangerous, I mean, it's just flat out dangerous, so.
I got one. Yeah, so brings us to. Agenda item seven, request to dedicate the name of the athletic field to Ben Clapp. And I don't, I don't know, usually like if that's anywhere, everyone was aware of the, Ben was a Wolkett kid. And played his old age for Wolkett and was one of the first kids I coached, just super good kid. So the. I guess for the amount of my personal money that I'm sinking into that ball field. You know, either the field or the reconstruction of the field, just to be able to hang a plaque up was, was really all I was, you know, was asking.
Yeah, I. I would, I would say absolutely to that, whatever you, whatever you wanted to do, a plaque dedication in memory of.
Yeah, and the. You know, before I said anything to his family, like I wanted to make sure it was okay and get approval because. Hard to even talk to them, you know, breaking down in tears, but the. You know. If I get permission to do it, you know, then I would ask permission from his family and Ben's foundation. And then anything that was written would be approved first through them and then submitted back to the select board before it was done.
So I think we probably should have a motion on that. Linda wanted to wait.
Linda wants to wait, okay?
Because she was thinking there should be more input.
No, she told me, no.
No, she was, she decided she was fine with that?
She told me before she left and in. She told me when she left, she said she would prefer that the dedication of the ball field be just that. Because she doesn't want this, she said we never intended to name the fields, but if we want to dedicate the field, and she is in favor of it, she would vote yes on that. She said, she explicitly expressed that the request wasn't intended to open up a call for a new name, but to simply dedicate the fields to Ben Clapp.
Correct. Yeah. Okay, because last I heard, she hadn't decided.
This was a couple days ago.
Okay, I'm saying last.
Okay, I'm saying last meeting, so. And I, I think some of that was around the clarity of that we weren't asking to rename the recreation or area or anything. We just wanted to dedicate the ball field or, you know, even if they didn't want the ball field, it's just a reconstruction of the ball field for, for what we had done. Yeah, I, I, I'll send a motion that we approve everything that you just outlined in terms of, uh, speaking to the family and, and run through us. And dedicating whatever they're comfortable with. Does that work, Michelle?
Yeah, so have, uh, lining, speak with family to dedication. Putting words in your?
No, no, dedication was that.
To authorize a dedication.
Oh, Richard, you have told me, Richard.
Hey, wait a minute. I was being distracted by a child. What was the question?
Uh, right now, there's a motion on the floor, uh, whether or not we're going to, uh, approve Flynn to approach the family of Ben Clapp about dedicating the School Street Ball Field to him.
I, I will definitely say yes.
Okay, so that sounds like our second. Yeah, your motion, Michelle? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, who's on? Opposed?
Oh, Alan's okay.
Kurt is opposed? Motion to pass. No, we really can't do it because we're missing Melinda.
She'll be here at six fifty.
Yeah, uh, are you?
Okay, so we have, um, board asked me to, somebody asked me to check out the appliances in the Peterson home on North Wilcut Road. Are they still there? They are. So I went in there this morning. There's a refrigerator. They all seem to be working. I can't tell because it's an electricity, but there's a refrigerator, a, a range, oven range, a washer and a dryer that are lying on the side, so I don't know if that hurts the, the appliances, but they're on their sides there. Then, um, there is a microwave, and then there's a wood burning, a really nice wood burning cast iron stove that it looks like it heated the books, so I think it's still valid. It's not really rested. Linda wanted to know what the board would like to do with these appliances. We have options. Do we dispose of them? Do we try to sell them or can we donate them? If we do, what would you like to do? Do you have any families who need them? And, um, or do we place them on front porch forums or first conference service?
I thought we wanted the range for here.
No, that's from House Woman's house. Yeah.
The only thing is, with the refrigerator on its side, you can't plug it in and run it.
It's not on its side.
Just the washer and dryer.
Washer and dryer isn't gonna hurt them.
Any ideas of what you'd like to do and if you'd like to donate them to whom?
I don't have anybody in mind, but I do think donating is a great idea.
Probably put them on front page, front porch, you mean? Nice.
Or even if you talk to someone like a capstone, they might know a family, like, in every part, it'd be a good idea.
It's a great idea.
They, they don't want them. We don't want them. We can take them down to resource.
Find this place here in town, too.
Yeah, and that was, that was gonna be my second. Before we did resource order, uh, good motoring, those larger places, was just see if, I don't know his name, but.
It's this used appliance.
Yeah.
And he maybe could take them and donate them or give them at reduced cost or something?
Yeah, yeah, if we can't find anybody to direct.
There's a huge, a large place sometime.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fish place. Sales and service.
What's it called?
It's something sales and service. I don't know what it's called.
Is that a occasional on the, on the bulletin board for a while? I just can't recall the name. You guys are all set with that. We're gonna have to scroll down, take them.
In three, two. Okay, uh, oh, the school board's there. We got an area. Um, one, but it's a two, two, there. I was like, one, two, three, two, three. Oh, I don't, okay, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't know what you had before. I wasn't gonna interrupt.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. So, um, I'm going to talk about the flooding recovery loans with two thousand twenty-four flood. Um, I have talked to Community National Bank, who we had a loan for in two thousand twenty-three flood, which we paid off. This one, it would be only four hundred thousand. We have spent approximately between two hundred eighty-five and two hundred ninety thousand on, uh, the projects we've done, emergency projects and what we've done so far. Estimated, uh, after that, a little more to finish the projects that, um, Michelle and Dylan would be working on. Um, so that would be four hundred thousand. This would take us a year. I think that theme of funds, but there was snow incoming lately. And so waiting on two thousand twenty-three, so, um, hopefully, but Michelle found out today, it could possibly be here maybe. So the issue, the issue is when funds are obligated, um, they go on into finance, the state finance, um, office. We have currently, th- that office is dealing with five different disasters, so including COVID, they're wrapping up COVID still. And so, um, they are, they are getting to each obligation as the obligated funds are coming in. This is a very new obligated request, as is the, the request for Elmore Pond, um, road for the debris removal. So, um, I, I've been asking our state rep, Grace Fennelly. She said finally today, um, that the director of recovery met with the staff because a lot of the staff are saying, why can't we get this, you know, what's going on? And they feel positive, they feel confident that they came up with some resolutions to the issue. I don't know what those are, but, um, so maybe July. In the meantime, we have to refill our offers going into the new year, so, um, we, we won't use all of the four hundred thousand. We'll use a part of it to recovery what we've already spent. And then, um, you just leave that sitting there until the other projects are done or have been obligated for the two thousand twenty-four. And, um, it's, it's an interest rate of, but.
Five point four three.
Which is a little lower than the one we had before, which was five point eight or something, and it's much less. This is nine million dollars, so I'm pretty sure by the end of next June or around June this time, hopefully, I hope they have the money. Let me put it that way. So I'm letting the board to, uh, do this loan, um, because it's not feasible for us just to, to just be waiting at this point. We have to run our own operations in our town, and I would love to say that we got a lot of money from our taxes, but um, million, almost a million one went right back out to the school, and it leaves us holding the delinquency, which is about a hundred and forty-seven thousand. So.
And is this like the last loan where the interest gets paid back? We can apply for that?
We can apply for it. We just don't know. I mean, I'm still waiting for the two thousand twenty-three local.
Yeah.
Uh, it's just, it's been obligated, but I haven't seen. Yeah, I don't know, because that was twenty twenty-three that they would cut the interest. We haven't heard if they will for twenty twenty-four.
Right.
It's all a work in progress, you know?
No way.
It's definitely faulty twenty-six thousand, but what is what we paid last time. And you don't really, if you don't borrow against it, you're not paying on it.
Right.
Yeah, like if you don't actually pull it out.
Yeah, right. Okay, so it looks like we're looking for a motion to approve, believed to borrow from Community National.
Do you hear you or not? I'll make that one.
Thank you, Kurt. Uh, I'll say. Richard's trying to.
Richard, we can't hear you.
Hang on a minute, I'm back.
No, Alan?
No. Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
Oh, good.
Oh, I just don't see your face, Alan.
I can't get the camera to work.
Okay.
Alan, if you turn the camera off, then we'll see your name on the screen at least.
Okay.
All right, so we have a first and a second. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 So, Richard and Alan, can you stop down tomorrow and sign the loan?
Uh, I will try.
Okay, Alan?
I can, I probably can tomorrow, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So Michael signs it, and then we get Kurt. I'll get those two, and Linda's gonna stop and try and sign it, while the board said okay.
All right, uh, which brings us back to the remainder of Michelle. Linda, do you need this? Everybody have stickers?
Yes, everybody has stickers. We're sticker mania. Just pick a line. We're gonna talk while you sign it. Do you want my?
No, we're in. I don't even write the letters anymore, so.
Um, we had a productive beaver issue on Fort Hill Road, um, and for Josie had been up there, you know, trying to clear, clean out that culvert day. We, Dylan went up and cleaned it out. And then we got, um, Tyler Brownson stayed up there. He checked it out and he said, you know, keep an eye on it for a couple of weeks, but if they come back, that he, it's definitely a good candidate for the, the beaver fence. I requested two estimates for the retrofitting of, of the fluorescent fixtures. Um, and I, I sent that off to the Vermont Efficiency Vermont so that we can update the grant and, uh, just waiting to hear back from them, and we can update that anytime. After July the first, I think we have it set up to for, uh, pool because it was the lower of the, the bits have got it set up, um, for the late August, and that seemed to be fine with efficiency program. Two days in August, August twenty-fifth and twenty-second. Um, with FEMA, I emailed two engineers, but it was still Greens Culberts. Um, to see if the project requires a design. I emailed Joey Wilson and, um, oh, Patrick Ross, and they both said yes. They both went out to the site, and I'm waiting to get um, their estimates of the, of the work that needs to be done there, of the estimates for the design of the work that needs to be done because FEMA needs that, that information, that looking forward to the work to completed project. Um, I kind of touched on briefly the Elmore Pond Road debris removal project was obligated, thanks Linda. It was obligated five weeks ago. We hadn't received the subgrant agreement from the state, so I called, and that's why I've been across these work rates to, to, uh, figure that out, and I've already filled in on what's going on with the obligation at the state office. Um, we are now running, the second program manager, Corey, who was assigned to us in March, is now leaving. I just found out yesterday that his last day is tomorrow. Um, for the, the DR forty-eight ten. Um, he, thus far, we have one project obligated, two projects that are kind of in limbo. Uh, the work to be completed has been passed off to the housing mitigation fans. The work completed, he keeps, the CRC had questions about a couple of things, so Corey's working real hard today and tomorrow, we can finish that up so that when he leaves, it's passed off to CRC so that hopefully they won't have any more questions and they can oblige that, and then we can get, at some point in the next six months, our payment for all the work that we have completed. Um, we met with Mike Green and, and Kurt, and I met with the, um, with Tori, uh, just to talk about the planning stage for the work on the Long Island Rail Trail, Trailhead. Um, this, we just kind of worked out who's gonna be doing one, and I, I pulled together all of the guidelines so that we don't interfere with the, the, um, with the V tracts. Uh, and I think they, Kurt and, um, Michael are gonna start. It can begin on June ninth, and I think they're gonna start cutting at some point, but if you, they can reach out to you and to, um, I believe it was McGrath. Everyone has to volunteer.
Uh, do you guys need just, let me know at all?
Well, we were going to try to flag it off on the tenth and possibly cut. But we hadn't had that to give us the dimensions of the areas.
Yeah.
We got the down now and pretty much the dimensions, it's kind of squares it off. It is triangulated, but you can pretty much see what to do.
Right.
Um, as far as the highway, the road crew borrowed the street sweeper from Elmore. Um, for one day, they were able to sweep pavement on Jones Road, Fort Hill, Flattery Road, and Gulf Road and School Street. Um, however, they spent half the day trying to repair the darn thing, and they spent four hundred dollars on any water holes. So, I asked them if they were gonna, you know, think about borrowing it to finish a couple of roads, and Dylan's, like, he wasn't, he was grateful that he could borrow it, but he's, he's a little afraid now.
Yeah.
Um, they painted the stuff line on North Wilcut Road today. Um, Jim took the CDL, I think I sent that out, and he passed, and so as of June second Monday, he is officially a full-time, permanent highway road crew worker. And thanks to Dylan, really appreciate Dylan's effort and all of that. It was excellent. It was so seamless.
Jim made it easy.
Um, so Dylan's how, had this gym up, working with the excavator, um, on Sand Isle, but like, behind Sand Isle. And then they're gonna start working on Birmingham soon. Um, as far as a better road, Cat B Grant for Elmore Pond Road, uh, Dan Judkins believes that they're gonna receive the funds that the state will receive the transportation funds they expected. Um, they're still waiting on a couple of program documents with the contract administrative folks, and so they hope to announce very uh, we would not be able to start until the beginning of fiscal year anyway, so hopefully if we get, we'll, we'll be getting about twenty thousand dollars-ish, seventeen to twenty, and our contribution is about twenty percent, but that's all any kind, any equipment. So, so the town is doing their own work on that particular project. Um, I sent out the transfer station recertification letters to abutting or to adjoining landowners. That's part of the requirement. That, that process now, we received the draft, approved the draft, and that process now is in public notification period, I believe, until July fifth, I think, so then after that is, it's, um, it can be recertified. So Linda and, um, I met with Alex Garden, Ga- Garrett, I'm sorry, who is the new town park, I'm sorry, Hyde Park Town Administrator. And we discussed the five thousand dollar a year interlocal animal shelter services agreement. Uh, what we found out was that Hyde Park was essentially eating about thirty thousand dollars a year on that contract for the last year and a half. They finally have now an agreement. They just had Stowe join, so now it is split evenly between, um, it's a thirty thousand dollar a year agreement, and each town, we have five towns now participating at five thousand dollars a town. It's a Stowe, Morris Town, Johnson, Hyde Park, and Wilcut. Alex is now seeking out communication with Elmore, Cambridge, and Jeffersonville, to see if they're interested in joining, and that would then every person joining would lower about a thousand dollars for each of us. He did just sign a new kennel agreement because the agreement needs to be signed every year, the contract, um, but he said that the kennel is not at all willing to work with anybody about dropping that. He said that the kennel is not at all willing to work with anybody about dropping that. And. Nothing else has really changed as far as that agreement. But he is actually, he's really an interesting man and man. Very on top of things, so I expect if anything's gonna happen, he can make it happen. Um the school street guardrails, everyone was saying that they were a little bit low. I went out and actually measured them. It's not, I didn't, I don't have a light meter to, to, an elevation meter to measure them, but. From my measurements, the lowest post measuring from the asphalt to the top of the rail. Not the post, but the top of the rail is twenty nine inches, which is within code. So we had three posts at twenty nine inches. The rest were up to a range of thirty six inches, which is higher than code. So I sent that off to Lafayette Guardrails and he said that at some point he's gonna send someone out in the next few months. To take an elevation meter and get a, a better, more accurate measurement, but he's not concerned at the moment because they didn't seem to be. At, at all out, out of code range. Uh as far as maintenance, we had, um I asked uh our maintenance contractor to insert the screens, anybody who did that and the, and the air conditioner. So that's all the data. He sent for the library screens to Country Hall for repair. The Maureen Hill property that was in violation of the junk and trash ordinance. Um I, we gave them thirty days to get that cleaned up. I had uh Bernard and. Mike Green go up there yesterday or maybe on June third, so yesterday. There's, they are, they're making progress. They actually have a rented dumpster up there. And it was filled. So I would imagine that they're gonna dump that soon because of, rather than pay for the cost of the rented dumpster. So I sent them another letter. You know, praising their, their progress and noted that we would have uh another site visit on June twenty fourth. So I'm not gonna issue any citations. I don't think it's fair if they're making progress. That's it for me.
Excellent. Um it occurs to me that. It occurs to me, we now have a forum, we can approve the minutes. Um so I take a motion to approve the minutes.
RD and I were the only ones that were here. So you don't.
Oh, we wasn't here that one?
He wasn't, nor Richard.
No, no, I'm right.
That's why I would say no.
Which brings us to select board review and action. We have the. Uh review application for S zero 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 one two four eight seven. On the cannabis control board, it's a renewal.
And actions tier two.
Maintenance tier two, yeah. Um. Yeah, it's a renewal. And as I know with these cannabis control board things, there really isn't anything other than a rubber stamp. So I would take a motion to approve that. From anybody willing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Who carries? Uh one that we had added to the agenda was another cannabis control board, S zero 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 one two six zero six. Um and this one is. Oh, Michelle?
It's a cultivator tier one, small cultivator renewal. And I can tell you the difference if you'd like, if I could pull it up.
All right, Mike, it says it's just a rubber stamp.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then the last thing that we added, uh and this is just kind of a notification of things to come in next. Uh hopefully next week's next meeting. Uh but it may get pushed to the one following depending on what the agenda looks like. Linda had received an email from. Who is this from? Jen Krebs, uh land acquisition coordinator for State Vermont. The letter says, hello Linda, I know you've received some correspondence from Lisa Cole, uh the M about land ownership surrounding the Levi Martin parcel, which is the place down here. That we had a dead end road. Um reprocesses surveyors found down Walcott on some land is in footprint of the old dead end road, older fifteen. Would the town be interested in donating that tunnel land to Department of Fish and Wildlife? This would connect our current, our current Lemoyle River Stream management area. Uh to the land we are pursuing through Levi Martin's buyout. I'm attached to survey. A boundary survey of Levi Martin's parcel as well as a sketch of what we believe the land ownership in that area looks like. If the town would like to transfer the land development, we would initiate a survey so that we could find actual boundaries of the town parcel. Linda has the intentions of inviting. Ted Krebs or perhaps Lisa Cole. Uh to an upcoming meeting to discuss this further. You just copy all that pictures.
I wish they'd be great as long as you take that embment out of the river.
We'll do it if you do this. Well, I wasn't that, because.
We got killed because of the financial cuts by the government.
No, I know. When, when we talked about the Vermont Fish and Wildlife and the Martin Parcel anyway, remember there was a guy here. From Vermont Fish and Wildlife and we asked whether or not they were gonna allow us to use that property to do all of the excavation and everything else. And that was another conditions, I think, that we placed on.
No, we asked if we, if they would take it down three feet.
Yeah.
It's gonna be better, yeah, flood plain.
Yeah.
Anyway, there was nothing about the embment. It was about the flood plain area. We've forgotten soil. Three feet.
Yeah, because that was one of the suggestions made to us by, I think that's how R M prepared that.
By, you know, Lemoyle County Planning.
Yeah. Um so that's Tori, what was her name? Megan?
Megan.
So that is all I know about that. Um. But I believe Linda intends to invite. Invite somebody with more information on that to one of the upcoming meetings.
Table and self.
Table and self.
Table and self. As well as the minutes that I keep trying desperately to approve.
It doesn't help. It doesn't help when you don't have people.
Yeah. Uh. We're in one more meeting this fiscal year. Meeting this fiscal.
We ever got now that stuff and.
I never. When I first started, when I first started, we were out early. So that sucked, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody got anything else? Fishing stories? Come on, something. My couple was seven, my wife's gonna expect something. So there's really nothing settled with the. Westover property. Nothing at all. There's not even anything penciled yet.
I see they had an excavator over there.
The demo will start.
Yeah, Arnold's ready to start. He's uh, he'll probably be starting tomorrow or next Monday. And um. Yeah, he's gonna tear up all the asphalt, maybe keep the concrete slab that's in the, that adjoining.
Right.
That tiny garage in the back. He's gotta get the garage doors out and then he's gonna try to keep the, the hand hewn beams.
So one of the ideas that has been floated uh is trying to put some kind of small pavilion or outdoor space.
Like here.
Yeah, something like that. Um and. You know, having a, a concrete foundation for that is allowable in these guidelines.
Well, if you can create pad beam, there you, it's just a matter of putting the anchor in and put the post up and there you go.
Right. And so if there is any concrete that is salvageable there. Uh between that and uh I walked through on Monday. And obviously it's an old house. There are some beautiful hand hewn beams. My thought was if a couple of those would come out gently. And didn't cause too much extra work, we could maybe warehouse it with a bus park or something until such a time when we got a grant to build the structure and we could use the original beams. To hold up, that's if we ever did something like that. If we didn't, then we would just have two thirty foot sections of hand hewn oak beams that we could do something with. Kind of benches, I don't know.
I'm surprised they're not pining. Also that was buying, we're doing those with you.
Uh boring, it's beautiful.
Oh, I know. I know, it's such a shame. It really is. Anyway, um so yeah, that's the Westover thing. We're, we're, we're looking for public, for public input. Like I said, your idea about the community garden, that's the kind of thing that we're hoping to find.
Well, I've heard had it in the back before.
Oh, really?
Is that soil? You could just bring in improved soil?
You can give us, we're the actual thing. Vegetative site stabilization, natural doom restoration and agricultural, agricultural cultivation. So I would say that a community garden would, would fall into that. Where we might get a little bit, where things might get a little bit rare is that any kind of fencing we put up would have to be flood coverage zone. In sand block degrees, so I don't know how that would, you know, like private fencing.
I think if it was the same as the split rail down here.
Split rail you could. I just, I don't know if you could do, some people like to do like chain link and stuff for it.
Or it doesn't work. It holds back debris.
Yeah, so floodwater.
So the golf carts, what you think?
Uh certainly they'll see that. I do know that they make some. Chain link fence that does work in flood plains because I've seen it, but. I don't know anything about it. But yeah, so please come to the forest meeting. I believe it starts at six. I know it's June twelfth.
Oh, that's six?
Yeah, um we're going to have flyers and things prepared. Placed at the, at this office for the school board vote, trying to get some outreach. Uh I think there's gonna be a public meeting on front porch forum about it. And.
Sit here?
Yeah, for the, for the people. We're gonna have a flyer or a pamphlet or something. And then we are hoping to have a, a weekend date. Um we had tentatively planned for this Saturday, but we're not gonna make it. Uh there are a couple other dates floating around. Is that in stone yet? So. At the pace that we're moving, it sounds, it might just be town barbecue. We'll see. So that's it. Um look at you, Richard.
I make the motion that we close this uh select board meeting. I see we're not overpopulated with members. And thank God I came on Zoom. I wouldn't have got anything done. But anyway, everybody have a wonderful week.
Thank you, Richard.
All those in favor say aye, aye.
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 I wanna go home.